Did end up in the first Madonna and Child by the great Renaissance artist Raphael coming into this country, right here in Baltimore. We're celebrating this 80th anniversary of the opening of the museum as a public institution in 1934 through this installation Ride of Raphael. And we're celebrating what was truly an extraordinary gift to the city of that Walters family. This dramatic new installation, which is in our collection galleries, is the first installation in over a decade of our permanent collection. It is the first step of enlivening the presentation of the collection, which was magnificently reinstalled in the early part of the 2000s. Today, you can see over 200 works, many of which have not ever been on view, that were selected to tell the story of Henry Walters and his father William through the art objects that they collected. I really encourage you to come to see and bring your families to come to see what is a behind-the-scenes look at their personalities and their tastes through their objects. You can discover their own excitement in finding a world beyond the U.S. world of art that they began collecting through their French paintings and decorative arts that they bought in the 1860s. You can discover that they too discovered the world through the World's Fair, through which they ended up collecting amazing. They were among the first collectors to amass a collection of Asian art. And the most glittering of their triumphs was the discovery of the world of Faberge and the diamonds and gold that they brought to this country as part of their collection of Faberge that was made possible by their travels. And I want you to know that here in Baltimore at the Walters, we have two of the total known 50 of the Imperial Faberge eggs. And they're right there in Charles Street, and they're on view. So we hope that all of the stories that we tell in this great installation will help schoolchildren, help adults, helps every citizen of Baltimore to understand how great art can in fact be a pillar of a great city. We are telling this story through programs, book signings, family festivals, and I'll just say that 1,300 family members came through our doors on Saturday to take part in creative workshops and to understand better the Walters story. We have interactive experiences. At the end of the installation, you too can write what your favorite memory of the Walters is. And then, on the other wall, you can tell us what you would like the Walters to be in the future. And in fact, we invite you to tweet your favorite memories of the Walters on your Twitter account. Mine is really boring. Don't go there. And finally, we're launching in January a mobile website with stories about the Walters family, stories about the people involved in the beginnings of our collection, stories about collecting itself, and menus that the Walters family enjoyed, so even food. But in closing, it truly is my great privilege to thank every Baltimore citizen who proverbially pulled the lever last Tuesday in favor of Question E. In so doing, you secured $400,000 in bond funds so that the Walters can complete crucial capital updates to its infrastructure and gallery spaces. These changes and these updates will allow you and your children to have the best, most exciting, most comfortable, and most up-to-date experience in your museum. Thanks to you, we will continue to care for the buildings and the objects that were given as a result of that death in November 1931 to the mayor and the city council of Baltimore in Henry Walters' words, quote, "for the benefit of the public." Thank you.
Thank you. Julia, thank you for the great work you're doing down at the Walters. We really appreciate how you reach out to the schools and make sure that our kids are able to come to the Walters. So again, thank you for a great job. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the October 27 City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 14-450, City Streets Closing A Portion Of Creek Alley. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and closing a portion of Creek Alley extending from West West Street northeasterly 330 feet, more or less, to West Cross Street as shown on Platte 257, A35A, in the office of the Department of General Services and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-451, Sale Of Property, Former Bed Of Creek Alley. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of Creek Alley extending from West West Street northeasterly 330 feet, more or less, to West Cross Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-452, Sale Of Property, 17, 19, and 23 South Gay Street. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain properties known as 17, 19, and 23 South Gay Street, consisting of approximately .3 acres and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-453, Baltimore City Landmark List, Olmsted Parkways. Ordinance for the purpose of designating the Olmsted Parkway, which consists of the public right-of-way of the 2,600 to 3,200 block of the Alameda, the public right-of-way of 0 through 1,800 blocks of 33rd Street, and the public right-of-way of the 1,600 to 3,900 blocks of the Gwinns Falls Parkway as a historical landmark. Sponsored, Clark, Mosby, Kraft, Costello, Scott, Stokes, Henry, and Welsh.
Please note that Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor. Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. This is truly east to west and west to east. A partnership between myself and the councilman from the 7th District because the Olmsted Parkways are from east to west, from west to east. So the median strips, we call them now, that run down the middle of the boulevards from Clifton Park up the Alameda, across 33rd Street, and then pick up on the west side of Drew Hill Park and run along the Gwinns Falls Parkway all the way to Leaking Park. That's all part of the Olmsted Parkways here in Baltimore City. And we have partnered to make sure their history is appreciated and preserved. So we appreciate this council's support. Thank you for, and my thanks to my partner for this partnership in preserving our heritage.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Agent Committee. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, this count is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-371, Electronic Smoking Devices. Ordinance for the purpose of extending the laws that prohibit smoking in certain places, prohibit the distribution of tobacco products to minors, and regulate the display, storage, and placement of tobacco products to apply to electronic smoking devices, defining certain terms, conforming certain language, and generally relating to the sale, distribution, and use of electronic smoking devices.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we heard this bill on October the 7th of this year. We had a lengthy hearing, hearing from people who have used electronic cigarettes and use people from the Health Department, from the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health, and other advocates both for treating e-cigarettes the same as regular cigarettes and those asking to treat them differently. This bill would treat them the same as any other smoking under the Indoor Clean Air Act with an exception of an amendment which I'll address momentarily. E-cigarettes are being regulated across the country. In the state of Maryland, they are not allowed to be sold to minors. There is not a lot of evidence right now in terms of overall evidence as to their effect on people. There is anecdotal evidence with regard to their usage. They are not advertised as cessation devices. There are some studies, but not formal clinical trials, to compare them to patches and to gum. But overall, they have not been put into formal testing as is generally required under the FDA. The most interesting thing, though, is that advertising has just started to address them, and this is the most recent advertising that we've found, and this is in a recent edition of Vogue magazine, advertising for the Mark Xe e-cigarette, which they have put up, the thing that's referred to as tombstone ads. And this is on an e-cigarette. This product is not intended for use by women who are pregnant or breastfeeding, or persons with or at risk of heart disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, or taking medicine for depression or asthma. Nicotine is addictive and habit-forming, and it is very toxic by inhalation. Nicotine can increase your heart rate and blood pressure and cause dizziness, nausea, and stomach pain. Inhalation of this product may aggravate existing respiratory conditions. This is one of the main reasons why we want this to be regulated by the Indoor Clean Air Act. Now, Mr. President, we did hear from a number of folks who said, well, these aren't smoking, it isn't regular smoking, and we believe that restaurants, bars, and taverns should have the right to be able to allow smoking in their facilities if they want to allow them to do that. So initially, they said, why don't we just let any restaurant or bar or tavern have smoking, and if you don't want to do it, put up a sign saying you can't do it. Committee said, no, that's not right. If you want it to say, if you want to do it in your place, you can do it, then we'll put up a sign and say, it is allowed here, and you can put it on your menu. That is what the exceptions are. They are on the members' desk in an amendment. I would move the amendment at this time.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Please note that Councilwoman Holton is a nay, and Councilman Scott is a nay. The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please note, Councilwoman Holton is a nay. You want to speak? Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I remember several years ago when two of my colleagues rather aggressively led a charge to have Baltimore be smoke-free in public places, which led to the state of Maryland becoming smoke-free. And it was an compelling argument that caused Maryland to be smoke-free. My colleague from the 1st District reading from a tombstone ad that sounds like something you'd read on the side of a pack of cigarettes. If we're smoke-free, are we truly going to be smoke-free? No, the FDA hasn't done the research. No, they haven't done any of those things. And yet, e-cigarettes, you know, there's evidence both ways at this point in time. You know, 50 years ago, lead paint was decided that it was safe to do, and look at what we know today. And so I would just caution, and I would hope that anyone who considers patronizing an establishment that allows e-cigarette smoking understands it's just the same as being around secondhand smoke. And that is why I vote no, because it's turning back the clock on a decision we made several years ago to improve health and to make public places smoke-free. Thank you.
Please note that Councilwoman Holton is a no. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 14-372, Plastic Bag Surcharge. Ordinance for the purpose of imposing a surcharge on certain bags provided by dealers to customers, defining certain terms, providing for the collection and remittance of the surcharge, requiring certain reports, prohibiting certain conduct, imposing certain civil and criminal penalties, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to a surcharge on plastic bags.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a chance to speak about this bill at length a little while ago. This bill was heard on November the 5th. It had been previously up on May 13th of this year. This bill was heard, early version of a 10-cent surcharge, Councilman Scott earlier in the term, and has been heard numerous times over the last number of years, but it's been heard twice this year, I mean, this term. During the hearings during this term, we've heard that it should be a 10-cent fee, a 25-cent fee, a 5-cent fee, that it should be on paper bags, it should be on plastic bags. We should have it, we shouldn't have it, the bags should be banned altogether. We heard that again this past time when we had the hearing just recently on November 5th. We should have it on paper and plastic, it should be 5 cents, they should be banned. The committee has reviewed all that, and we have one set of amendments on the members' desk, and those are the committee amendments. And they are two. First Amendment is a technical amendment, and that is, there was a typographical error which referred to the subtitle as Subtitle 29, it should be Subtitle 30. And the Second Amendment, it was supposed to, was effective January 1, and we moved it to April 1 to reflect the fact that the hearing moved from May to November. So we would move the committee amendments at this time.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Specter.
I haven't moved the other amendment yet. Okay.
I just would like to speak to my concern that somehow or other, the council has morphed this from a horse to a cow. We were always talking, and it was voted on, and it was lobbied as a fee for plastic bags. Yesterday, I noticed that instead of a fee for plastic bags, the action of the committee was going to be to ban plastic bags altogether. I shared my visit on Saturday with the president and all the members. There was an international conference on harbors. I attended that. And aside from all the other information, the data said that the tonnage of trash in our inner harbor was generated by plastic bottles and cigarette debris. Nothing about plastic bags. And I didn't understand, at lunch, I asked, what was the situation that we were going to be voting on at 5 o'clock today? And I was told, come to the press conference at 4:30. I was really left understanding if there is going to be a different position on plastic bags voted on at 5 o'clock from what the public knew as imposing a fee, then at least, at least give the public an opportunity to speak to the fact that it will now ban plastic bags, put a very, very expensive and environmentally negative influence in Baltimore City because paper bags cost more? Paper bags are not as utilitarian as plastic bags are? Let the public speak to it. I am so concerned that we're going to operate in a vacuum, and the public will not know what has changed here from the hearing on Wednesday the 5th and what we're voting on tonight, the 10th. If you are going to make such a big change as from a fee to a ban, change the whole issue, at least let the public speak. Do not do this. Do not do this to the people who live here and the people who make a living here. It's just patently wrong. I don't, I don't know what else to do except express the opinion of almost everybody that I've spoken to. At least put it back in committee. Let it be discussed whether it has merit or not over the fee.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you. Mr. President, there is an amendment to be offered from the president. If we could have that distributed at this time. It is an amendment entitled by President Young. It's four pages. It was just distributed by Liam. It's being distributed right now. And as I stated earlier this afternoon, during our hearings, we have had many requests not just to impose the fee, but in, to alternatively ban the bags. As a result of those discussions, and a result of many other efforts have been taking place over this time, and as I stated earlier, nations around the world have simply banned these bags. Few of our states have banned them. Many, many more nations and cities have imposed fees on those who have elected to use the bags, and that's how the bill was originally written. Folks have reacted strongly to the entire idea of paying another fee, but we have continually insisted for 10 long years that our concerns and our efforts have not been about the money, they have been about the bags. We have a unique opportunity to be able to do that thing now that we originally set out to do. We have amendments here sponsored by the president, and I would move the amendments at this time.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Specter.
May I request, Mr. President, because you've authored them, you walked through them, because we're not obviously going to have a hearing? Can you please explain these amendments?
Chairman Kraft, explain amendments, please. It's to ban plastic bags. That's as simple as I can put it.
And it took 10 amendments to do that?
It already done pass. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
All those, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged. Please note that Councilman Scott is a nay, Councilwoman Specter is a nay. You're abstaining. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 14-413, International Green Construction Code. Ordinance for the purpose of adopting the International Green Construction Code as part of the Building, Fire, and Related Codes Article of Baltimore City, subject to certain additions, deletions, amendments, and other modifications, providing for certain exceptions and alternatives, conforming, correcting, and clarifying related language, providing for the effect, construction, and effective date of this ordinance, and generally relating to the Building, Fire, and Related Codes for Baltimore City.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we introduced this bill in June and announced the beginning of a series of work sessions and hearings on the bill. We met on this bill on August the 5th, August the 13th, September the 16th, October the 7th, November the 5th, met in groups small as 15, as high as about 30, working with this bill. I'd like to thank in particular Ms. Alice Kennedy and Ms. Katie Byrne. Alice Kennedy from the Office of Sustainability and Katie Byrne from the Department of Housing for all of the hard work that they did on this bill and helping us write this legislation. There are amendments on the members' desk. I would move the amendments at this time.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any nays? The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Did I hear a nay? The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill 14-443, Police Equipment Audio-Video Recording Devices. Police Equipment Audio-Video Recording Devices. Ordinance for the purpose of requiring all police officers employed by the Baltimore City Police Department to be personally equipped with digital audio and video recording devices, and allowing a phased implementation of this requirement during the first year following the effective date of this ordinance.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft. Councilman Branch, correct. Mr. President. Chair recognized, Councilman Branch. Thank you so much, sir. On October the 18th, we heard this bill win committee. In fact, some of my colleagues and I, we visit one of the municipalities in the state of Maryland to see how they actually use the audiovisual bodyo cameras. At this time, I would like to recommend a favorable report. Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of this bill being in favor of reports, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair recognized, Councilwoman, you're a nay. Please note, Councilwoman Specter is a nay. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Specter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to explain that I am certainly in favor, and I understand everybody wants to see our police officers operated maximum. It's just that from the letter I received from you, that you questioned the Attorney General whether or not it was legal for the council to do this, and the Attorney General said they would not take this up, but they would generally agree with our city solicitor. Again, I speak, illegal is not a sick bird. It was told by our city solicitor and the Attorney General that this is not a legal action of the city council, and for that reason, I vote no.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Clark.
I would just like to rise to say that when it comes to legal opinions, they're a matter of opinion. We know that in this council. We appreciate the citizens backing us up by approving for us our own independent council. I sponsored Living Wage and got a law report that we didn't have the right to enact it citywide. Several years later, I introduced it again, and the Solicitor's Office said, we do have the power to enact it. It's a matter of opinion. But the opinion that counts right now is that our citizens need to know, and our officers need to know, that they are protected by real lifetime evidence of the enforcement of law in our city. And I think, I appreciate the lead sponsors taking the lead in this issue. I think the citizens feel that it is a step in the right direction of restoring the balance we absolutely must achieve in order for our city to move forward, and I know we can. Thank you.
Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, and I'll be very brief. I would just rise to be very short to say that I think that we all know at this point, it doesn't matter who's going to get the credit for this, we're going to have body cameras on our police officers. So at this point, you know, it's pretty much a moot point to argue about back and forth about the law department and all of that stuff. What we all have to do is, we have to come together to do what the citizens want. And we all know that they want the cameras on the police officers, so at the end of the day, that's all that matters. Thank you.
Chair recognized, Councilman Branch. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I give the mayor credit for bringing a police commissioner here to Baltimore City, who was the architect of these cameras. What he's done in California, you have municipalities across the country that's picking up and running with the ball. This is not a request that I'm asking, and it is not about who gets the credit or who don't. I have 45,000 constituents in my district, and the majority of those constituents, when I meet them on the street, say they want these cameras. I am only merely a representative for the people that I represent in my district. It is not my play to tell them what is best for them. They sent me here. They sent me here. I am just one, one of the representatives from each one of these districts who's hearing the calls from the people, from our constituent. If the mayor questions the opinion of her commissioner, then that's something that she has to deal with, but today I'm here to voice the opinion for the people in my district. It is not, I applaud the mayor. On her watch, she brought a, if it was Commissioner Billfield, who didn't have the experience with the camera phones, I would be the first to say, "You're 100% right, Mayor. We need a task." But we have the architect here. All the questions that the administration is getting to oppose this bill is coming from their commissioner. Their policy set place in California, so if the policy went bad, then it shouldn't be operated nowhere in this country, nowhere in this, in this country. So I stand firm for the people who we support and who we have to talk to for once. Let's do something for what they want instead of what we think is right. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's been, it's been second. All those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This bill moves the third reader. Urban Affairs and Agent Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0424, Urban Renewal, Market Center Amendment, ordinance for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Market Center to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, to clarify and correct certain language, to amend Appendix B to add a certain property, to revise an exhibit sheet to reflect a change in the plan, and to extend the life of the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of the ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on October 30th, 2014. There is a technical amendment on your desk. I move the amendment favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is to approve the amendments or adopt. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. I now move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader. Third reader to be held two meetings.
City Council Bill 14-0379, Plant Unit Development Designation Remington Row, for the purpose of approving the application of Miller Square LLC, Miller's Square Retail LLC, and 211 West 28th Street LLC. Their affiliates and assigns, who are either the developers, contract purchasers, potential owners, and/or owner of the area consisting of the properties listed on Exhibit 1, attached hereto and made part of the ordinance, together with adjoining roads, highways, alleys, right of ways, and other similar property, enter the properties designated a business plant unit development, approving the development plan submitted by the applicant, and providing for a special effective date.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 14-0432, Food Service Facilities, mirroring state law, for the purpose of redefining food service facility and to mirror state law, providing in accordance with state law for certain licensing provision, certain licensing exceptions, clarifying the basis for certain license application fees, defining and redefining certain terms, clarifying, correcting, and conforming related provisions, and generally relating to the regulation of food service facilities. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0446, City Property, naming a portion of the Stony Run Walking Path to be the Adam DeCocchi Jr. Walking Path in Stony Run Park, for the purpose of naming a portion of the Stony Run Walking Path located in Stony Run Park to be the Adam DeCocchi Jr. Walking Path in Stony Run Park. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill 140436, Official City Slogan, Baltimore Birthplace of the Star Spangled Banner, on Tuesday, November 18th, 2014, at 9:30 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Land Use and Transportation Committee has a hearing scheduled for this Wednesday, November 12th, at 1:00 p.m. on Council Bill 140428, a rezoning of a portion of 2051 South Hanover Street. That hearing is postponed. It will not happen on Wednesday. It is being rescheduled until Wednesday, December the 3rd, 2014, at 2:00 p.m. Once again, the land use hearing scheduled for this Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. is being postponed until Wednesday, December 3rd, at 2:00 p.m. The Land Use and Transportation Committee will hear Council Bill 140439, Plan Unit Development Amendment Number One, Greetown Redevelopment, on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2014, at 1:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Community Development Committee will meet for a work session and voting session on City Council Bill 14-0361, Late Night Commercial Operations, Multiple Businesses, at 3:00 p.m. next Monday, November 17th. I'm announcing this for both the chambers and the current room, in case we have to be out of here so that we can set up for the 5:00 council meeting. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements. The first is taxation, finance, economic development on Wednesday, December 3rd, 5:00 here in chambers, televised hearing, Bill Number 14-0183R. It will be for the purpose of requesting Director of Recreation and Parks and Finance to come before the city council to discuss the implementation of the recommendations contained in the audit report by the Baltimore City Auditor dated April 9, 2014. Now, Mr. President, we want to hear the report from the auditor, but what they did wasn't actually an audit. It's called an audit, but no respectable person outside of any government, city government particularly, would have signed off on what they did. There's no payroll system per se. There is no financials. What we have is something un-auditable, but we are going to hear from Recreation and Parks and Department of Finance and audits here in chamber on Wednesday, December 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. Also, Mr. President, I want to re-announce that there will be a legislative oversight hearing on Monday, December 1st, at 5:00, also televised, on the procurement of consultant services for water and wastewater efficiency study, and also for the home serve warranting letters that went to all of the residents of Baltimore City. We'll be hearing those two matters on Monday, December 1st, 5:00 here in chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, December 8th, here in council chambers at 5:00 p.m., the Budget Appropriations Committee will have a televised hearing for City Council Resolution 12-8R, Quarterly Budget Briefings, for the purpose of calling on the Chief of Finance Department's Bureau of Budget and Management Research to brief the city council on how the city's actual finances compare to its budgeted projections in a timely manner after the close of each quarter in the city's fiscal year. We will hear, Finance's briefing will focus on fiscal year 2014 closeout and projections pertaining to the first quarter fiscal year 2015, July 1, 2014 through September 30, 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, Education and Youth Committee will meet on Thursday, November 20th, at 4:00 in the afternoon, right here, council chambers. This is an informational hearing on the Baltimore Opportunity Schools Report. I think you'll find it very interesting, and I hope that as many council persons as possible will attend. And on Thursday, December 18th, 4:00 p.m., we will hold a hearing on Bill 13-130R, which is a resolution introduced by the President of the City Council promoting educational success through a continued partnership and oversight. In other words, let's bring the partners in and see if they're still partners, and see the conditions under which that can go forward. Should be a very positive, useful effort. Thank you, Mr. President, for the introduction, and that's on the 18th of December.
Thank you. Regular announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. Then you, Councilwoman.
Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Like many people in this room, I have people in my family that served. Growing up, I had a grandfather who served in the Pacific as a sailor, and my mother's father, my other grandfather, who jumped on D-Day, was captured by the Germans and spent 11 months in captivity. I think it's stories like that, and it was probably my favorite story growing up, hearing about that, and it's things like that that should remind us of the need to reflect on the sacrifices of the brave men and women who have served us, and reaffirm our commitment to taking care of veterans throughout this country, and especially in Baltimore City.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to share with the listening audience that this Saturday, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., the Baltimore City Delegation's Education Subcommittee will be holding a public hearing with many of those interested in public education and what we do. It will be held at the University of Baltimore at UB Learning Commons Building, in their town hall meeting room, and I make that announcement because they are interested in the public, those who are parents, concern community about education in Baltimore City and our children, and looking to bring together many stakeholders to hear their views and concerns before the beginning of the legislative session in Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Commitment, I mean, regular announcements. Regular announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. The gentleman from the freshman colleague from the 11th district, I want to thank you for pointing out that tomorrow is Veterans Day, where we, that's to celebrate a holiday and take off, close city government. Up until about eight, nine years ago, Baltimore City didn't recognize Veterans Day, but an effort by several council people, including myself, made the administration celebrate Veterans Day, not just for a holiday, and it's not just like the NFL yesterday said, that salute to service. It was the theme all through the NFL yesterday in all the football games, but I find out over the years, whenever I find a gentleman wearing a uniform or newly was in the service in the World War, in Vietnam, Korea, Afghan, and all the other wars that we've fought over the years, I've learned just to say, "Thank you. Thank you for your service," and that's what tomorrow's all about, when we say, "Thank you" to those who served our country. Maybe some of them gave the supreme sacrifice, but it's good to know that Baltimore City recognizes and says, "Thank you" to the many veterans that serve us and give us their freedom so we can stand here and be legislators. So, celebrate tomorrow. Don't just take off a seat late. I'll be at the stage tomorrow after the parade. I don't do the parade anymore, but I do the stage, and to honor our veterans and many of the city employees. So, to all the veterans, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Curran. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry, then Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask my colleague from the 5th district to excuse a small breach of councilmatic courtesy. I wish to ask for a moment of silence for one of her constituents, Malik Lively, who is a lifelong friend of my family. Some people, people from Baltimore who've been around for a while, especially if you were involved in the civil rights movement, may remember Malik's father, Walter Lively, who was a strong fighter for civil rights in Baltimore, and who also passed away at the disturbingly early age of, I believe Walter passed when he was about 34, 35. And so, my father was sort of a godfather to Malik growing up. Malik passed away last week at the still disturbingly early age of 47, and so I would ask for a moment of silence from the council in honor of his passing.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President and colleagues, two Sundays ago, myself alone with our colleagues from the 7th and 11th districts participated in the Baltimore City Youth Commission Stop the Violence Turkey Bowl, also Mr. Broadwater from the Sun participated. It was a great event for us to interact with.
Did he play?
Yeah, he played. He can play. I did burn him for a touchdown. I wasn't going to say that, but, and just so everyone knows, the three of them were on the losing team. I was on the winning team. Just so, just so, just so we get that out there. But, yeah, it was at the Dublins Arena, Councilman Craft's district, which is a great thing, but it was a great event for the youth commission to put that together, to have young people, adults, you know, us here as elected officials, the media, interact all for a great cause, because we know we have some issues around violence in our young people in our city, so I just wanted to applaud them. And lastly, I just want to congratulate the great Mervo High School for winning the Baltimore City Football Championship this past Friday, as they were victorious over Emerson to the score of 9 to 8. We know that most of the city was concerned about an exhibition game on Saturday, but the game for all the marbles was played on Friday night at 3,500 Hillen Road under the lights, so congratulations to the Mustangs.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter.
Thanks, Mr. President, members of the council. I just wanted, I know that we want to wish speedy recovery to our colleague, Edward Reissinger, Vice President of the Council. I spoke with him over the weekend, and he's hoping to feel a little better. I didn't think he would be here today, but I know that he's in our thoughts, and we wish him a speedy recovery.
Thank you. I want to, for a moment of silence for Ray Holland, and I won't be able to join the Veterans Day Parade. I normally participate. One of my friends, his mother passed away, and her funeral's tomorrow, so I won't be able to be there. So Bobby, you said you'd be there, right? You'll be at the Veterans?
Yes, and if I may, Mr. President, just making a public announcement about the parade, just very briefly. The parade starts at 9:00 a.m. at the Washington Monument, Charles and Center Streets, and the parade will come south from Charles Street from the monument to the ceremonial stage, which at 10:00 a.m., the stage will be over here in the War Memorial Plaza. Should have nice weather, so please come down and say thank you to our vets.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, November 17th, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ray Holland, Malik Lively, and Jack Harris.